Okay, we are set.
All right. Thank you. First, I would like to welcome everybody to the Safety and Climate Committee meeting. We meet the first Monday of each month from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And at this time, we're going to open it up with the opening procedures of the roll call and introduction. Trustee Jabilas Smith Foles.
Smith Foles, present.
And myself, Trustee Christian, present. And the approval of the agenda from the last meeting from February the first. Are there any, actually, like to make a motion to, you know, approve the agenda from the last meeting?
So we're approving this agenda, right? Or the minutes? Are we approving the agenda or the minutes, Trustee Christian? B or C?
Oh, it's the minute, C.
Okay, so we're proving the minutes. Did you, I never got it.
Well, actually, we do the agenda first.
We do the agenda first.
Okay, I move to approve the agenda as it stands, Trustee Christian.
Okay, so move the approval of the agenda. So we're all in favor of approving the agenda. And now we go to item C, the approval of the minutes from February the first.
So, Trustee Christian, I didn't get a chance to look at the minutes. Did you get a copy of the minutes?
No, I didn't.
Dr. Wool, we can't approve them if we didn't get them.
So we will, because you did not get them in advance, we're not going to ask you to review them at this moment. We'll put them back on the next agenda for formal approval and make sure that they're sent out beforehand again for review.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll open up for any public comments at this time.
Let me look for hands right now. I do not see any hands raised for public comment, so we can move to the first discussion item.
Okay, the first discussion item is letter A, discussion, the role of the district crisis response team. And that will be done by Judy, help me, which last name is a Coeck?
It's Jody Koehck.
Koehck, sorry, Judy Koehck. The coordinator of special education will outline the support that the district provides for students and staff during the crisis situation. And so at this time, Judy Koehck will give an update.
And so I'll just do a quick introduction. We're really pleased to have Jody here today to really talk about what does the district do when there is a crisis? How do we devote resources as we've been dealing with the pandemic, but even before the pandemic? There are times where our students or our staff are put under great strain and we have an entire response protocol to help support them. So Jody's going to kind of walk through and you'll be able to share your screen, Jody. And so I'd like her to kind of present what we do so that this committee can have a good understanding and then we can have a nice discussion about any next steps.
I always forget where that view button is. There it is. All right, you got me?
We do.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of give you the overview, the graphic, and then the later slides, we'll talk more in detail. But the definition of crisis itself is, well, I'll give you some district definitions that we use as to determine what, who to launch and who to support. But the nature of a crisis, as you guys all know, is so dynamic. It changes according to facts that come in, what people need, what supports are in place, and what other kinds of things evolve as we do the crisis response. But this is kind of in a nutshell, the way it will look. We do try to differentiate between a limited crisis, which would be a single classroom or group that might be affected versus a school or district-wide crisis, mainly because it depends on who we call in as well as who the school site staff, parents, students will find to be the most, just the most supportive, the most beneficial in times of crisis. So a limited crisis, when it's one classroom or a group of students, the general way that we proceed is the site here notifies the psychologist. Where basically whoever finds out first about the crisis notifies the site leader and the psychologist. Sometimes that comes from district office, or it might come from news, or just people calling people. The psychologist notifies the school-based mental health supports that we have at the school, who are familiar to that school community. And then the psychologist notifies the crisis intervention team lead if additional supports are needed besides what is at the school site. And at this point in time, I am the crisis intervention team lead. School district-wide crisis, site leader would notify district administration, psychologists and CIT lead. So we kind of all get the information at the same time, or whoever gets it first, make sure all of those people are notified. I, as the lead, I contact and organize our crisis team members. So at this point, the crisis is assumed to be greater than what can be supported by the mental health professionals who are on that campus. Or some of the smaller, like elementary schools that don't have a health center, or a lot of mental health professionals will go ahead and launch the crisis intervention team for them. So I contact and organize the crisis team members. CIT lead also calls in the community-based organization partners and additional supports as needed. So again, these may not be people who are providing services on site, but they are standing by and always ready to help. And we just have some great community partners out there who may hear about the crisis first and might be just contacting us directly. How can we help? How can we support our students and our families? We're all in the same community, serving the same people. The site psychologist always takes the lead in the crisis response activities, if it's site-based or if it's more school-wide. And the reason for that is they are the one constant at the school site, the mental health professional who doesn't change. So as our partners come in and community-based organizations and our interns come in, they may change from time to time, but the site psychologist is there year after year, unless they change their assignment, year after year, is trained in crisis response protocol and has the relationships with the students, the staff, they have the familiar face. So they're able to kind of organize what the need is in collaboration with their team. So that's the, like a really basic overview. I just want to get into the nuts and bolts. I kind of said this, but this is just the definition of what we tell our staff and our partners that if it's a classroom, if it's a small group of students, if it's an individual student experiencing a crisis, typically that would be handled at the school site level. So then we're not bringing in all these unfamiliar people to the school site. And then at that point, if there aren't enough supports at that site, or we actually start working with a couple of students and see that the need is greater, then the CIT would be called in. The school-wide crisis is when the crisis has had school-wide impact, district-wide impact, community impact. So at that point, the crisis intervention team is launched. And you'll see these might be environmental disasters, loss, tragedy that has a disruptive effect on the whole school, and likely multiple school sites. Principal or school site administrator makes the request to the site psychologist, who then calls the CIT lead to see how much is needed and what other supports do we need to get out there. The crisis intervention team members, this, this could go on and on. I just realized I could use a lot of slides for this one. You know, it's basically all hands on deck and, you know, we have crisis preparedness training. But generally, what our students and families need when there's the crisis, they need support, they need holding, they need connection and be able to grieve, talk, ask questions, be angry, have all of their feelings, and they need a space for that. So although we do have mental health professionals on site and school psychologists, and we make sure we have plenty to go out, often it's the counselors, the coaches, the school site people that, that students will go to and, and talk to. So we just kind of say, this is our broad team membership, but always knowing that I will launch, or whoever's the lead will launch the specific people to actually go into the site. Because all of these people on this list, if they're site-based, may also be affected personally by the crisis and need some support by the mental health professionals. Okay, so this is just kind of more of how that flow chart looked where the side, the principal, whoever hears first, admin notifies school site. If they find out first, or I find out first, I notify admin at school site. And then we look at who's on deck, who, who's onsite. We want to make sure that the kids have people, familiar faces during this time. We want to make sure that our crisis team, whether it's a school site level or district-led crisis team, that we are matching our community in terms of ethnicity, language needs, all sorts of supports where kids will feel like they, like they can relate to who's coming in, especially if it's not someone who's onsite all the time. So the site psychologist will, if they need further support, will contact the lead. And then the principal, of course, makes sure downtown knows if it came to the school site first and what the, what the planned response is. So again, this is kind of more of the same, but at this point, this next part is that the, this is where we call in our partners. And again, I said that if it's in the news, if it's in the media, if people are really feeling it and seeing it, they will call me and they'll say, where do you need more support? And like one of our most recent crises, we had three teams out at the same day, as well as individuals out working with students and, and community that asked specifically for support. So we're really lucky that our community partners will, will just step in and will reach out to us on this. Okay, so these are, this is some of the crisis response services. Putting this slide together, I was thinking, again, it depends on the crisis. I've been doing this work for over 30 years and, you know, you know how many we often have in our community. And things change as we go, but we do try to follow a similar protocol at the beginning, just so that everybody knows what to expect. So first, the crisis team is notified, whether that's the smaller team or the expanded team. We organize the resources. There is a planning meeting first thing in the morning when we can, unless the crisis occurs in the middle of the day. But as soon as we can get our staff together, the site administrator will send a, send a message out to staff, come in, come in early for a staff meeting so that we can go ahead and give them as much information as we know, but also give staff support so that they can meet the needs of the kids. At that planning meeting, it's where we kind of say, okay, who's going to go where? How are we going to hold space for different populations? So, you know, often staff and students should not be in the same grief space or crisis intervention space. So at that point, we kind of decide, okay, who's needed where? If it's a coach situation, maybe coach wants some support in circles on the field, maybe there's some other kind of ways. So this is where we figure out, what does the school need? How are we going to respond on, on day one? Knowing that by the end of day one, we will be debriefing to figure out what else is needed and what kinds of follow-up. So then again, site administrator, after that meeting, will be notifying community and sending out the message to let them know where the supports are, as well as the information as we have it. And call central office support if there's some media attention or some other things that we need to do to protect the safety and the confidentiality of our students and our families. Crisis team counselors will open rooms and spaces for students and staff to meet. That happens when we are in-person learning, and it also has happened quite a bit this year while we were virtual learning, that we had some main spaces and then some breakout rooms and then spaces identified for, for different people, as well as appointment-only spaces, because some people are not comfortable just coming, this again is in the, the in-person space too. Someone may not be comfortable coming in the room with a group or into the Zoom room with a group, but may in fact need support. So there's a method by which they can reach out to make appointment for some individual time. Okay, and so we have group, individual crisis support, circles, just some spaces for kids to come and talk to each other. What we found is in our community, particularly the high schools, the kids really just kind of need to band together and, and have that space to talk and know that confidentiality will be kept and that there's some support for when it gets like too overwhelming for them. The, the, the crisis team counselors are available to support teachers in affected classrooms. And what that looks like is if we have had the loss or traumatic event of a teacher or a student, there is a team of usually one or two counselors that will actually rotate through that teacher or student's classrooms throughout the day to be there to kind of pick up on kids that may not automatically come in for support as well as to be able to just like really support when it's fresh and we see that somebody's missing from, from our school family. We have debriefing and after-school meetings that are offered to staff at the end of the day. The other thing I wanted to say about that is we do have some scripts that we can give staff and train staff to use because we don't want a lot of misinformation coming out in the classroom space. And, and staff, after holding space with kids all day, will often just need to come in at the end of the day and have their own time, as well as debrief. Who, who needs further support? Who do we need to reach out to? In our open spaces, we are constantly keeping up, running along, not only of who's coming in, but who else is not coming in? Our site staff know. They, I, one of these crises recently, someone said, I have a list of about 20 kids. And so we want to follow up with those kids individually, whether they come in or not, so that they know we're there to support. So we have the debriefing and after-school meetings, and then at that point, offering additionally community resources as well. The, the other part of the community resources is for parents and family members. We usually identify someone on the staff, hopefully that knows the family and is able to reach out to them directly, not only to express care and support, but also give some follow-up community resources that, that are available for them. And this is the model that all of our psychologists are trained on, and it's the model I know we use a lot of times in safety response. But it's the prepare model, it's really helpful to have a model, so everyone goes in kind of with the same. We're going to prevent and prepare for crisis. And we spend a lot of time on the R part of this model, the reaffirming physical health and welfare and helping kids to feel as safe in the place as they can and, and secure. And that people are there to take care of them. And while we can't always make it better, we're there and we hear them, we see them, we can help hold them. Evaluating the future trauma risk for, for kids and staff that might really need more beyond the crisis intervention model, providing the interventions, responding to those longer-term mental health needs in our community. There has been so much trauma over years that often students, staff will come into these spaces and may not be directly responding to the crisis we're there to address, but might actually be trauma after trauma, it's just too much. And so they might need some more support because it, it's had a, just a vicarious kind of effect for them throughout. And then examining the effectiveness of crisis preparedness, we call that our debrief. And I know I talked really fast and gave a lot there, so I do believe these slides are, are attached in the agenda. But I thought this would be a good time for you to take down my number as a crisis intervention team lead, knowing that it would always start with the school site, school site leader, and then the psychologist. But if, if it's bigger than that, and you know it's bigger than that, or if, you know, for some reason this works too. And then our staff secretary can also send out psychologists as needed. So I thought it would stop now and then see, that was a lot. If there are questions or thoughts or...
Trustee Jamilas Mofos, any questions?
Yes, I have some questions. Does every site have a psychologist?
Yes, they do. They're not on-site full-time, but everyone has a psychologist assigned to them.
How many psychologists do we have in the district?
I don't have the exact number. It's around 40-something FTE.
So we have 40, and we have how many sites? 50, 50-plus sites? Dr. Wool, how many sites do we have specifically?
54 different, 53 sites, schools. And I'll get the exact number of psychologists in a couple of minutes for you.
Okay. And in addition to that, the psychologist, besides being site-based, that there are a lot of different assignments, such as bilingual assessment team and things like that, as well as the school sites, they say.
Okay, so how many, you said that we try to have psychologists that fit the profile of the students, that they will, the students and staff. How many black psychologists do we have in the district?
That I may not be able to answer.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure either. Not enough.
How many, how many X psychologists do we have?
Yeah, so I don't have the numbers of the demographics, but I, I like the question. And I'm the one who builds the monthly crisis team support. And, and so the psychologists take a month to support crises. And sometimes they're not called during their month. And on those months, we do try to balance about according to ethnicity, language, other kinds of needs that might be communities best served. And then, like, that's a good question, because I definitely have a bilingual psych every single month. But if it's a school that has a high Spanish-speaking population, I'll call in from the other months. Depending on the new school, that's where we try to match it, but we at least know we'll have four people ready to go should something happen immediately.
Okay, and do you have a presentation or slides or something that has exactly what you just did for us, except what it was going to look like at a COVID response? Is that going to look the exact same with, when we go back on campus? Because you're going to need more psychologists, more counselors, more intervention, more resources. Do you have that ready?
I do not have that ready.
Okay, but you, 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 you do believe that we're going to need something special when we go back because of what could happen?
Well, just even with the spaces, right? The holding spaces would look really differently. You're not going to have a bunch of kids sitting on a couch in the grief room or whatever. Yeah.
Right. So I would love for that to come back, so we can take a look at what that would look like. And then the, since the shutdown, what has your crisis intervention team, what has their PD look like, or their training look like, or their, what have, have they had that opportunity to train and to know this is how we're going to respond if a teacher, God forbid, happens to have, you know, this is what we're going to respond if we have to do a two-week shutdown and then come back? This is how we're going to, all of that's already happened?
Right. So they've had a lot of, they have a lot of training at the beginning of the year. And then unfortunately, they get experience throughout the year. So that's that thing with that launching meeting. That first meeting is to make sure everybody feels comfortable in their level of training and what else they need. But everybody gets it right at the beginning. And, and like I said, we will be practicing, unfortunately, if you will, and then debriefing after, because we learn from each crisis too.
Okay. Um, so they're kind of learning on the job?
No, they're, no, they have PD beforehand. They're, they're trained in the prepare model.
Okay.
And, but like I said about crisis, you just never know what's going to come up and where, where the kids are going to go and what they're going to need. So, but they definitely are all trained before they come into the room.
Okay, and then you said that your community-based organizations, they'll reach out to you if something's happening in the, in the community. And is there any, what's the process for you reaching out to them? It's just if you hear something on campus? Like if you hear something on campus, or if it's brought to your attention through a site administrator who then talks to the psychologist, then this kicks in?
Yep.
And if not, it'd kick in. So it has, that's a way that the crisis, the CIT can kick in. That's one way. Another way is if the community-based organization brings it to you. That's the second way that this kind of gets activated. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. And even more so, I was trying to play with a slide on that, because there's so many ways we get our information. A kid may post something on social media, or, you know, I watch the news every morning. But we have speed dial for my, the community-based organizations and partners have me on speed dial, and we just kind of talk to each other. If something's often, these things will happen maybe a weekend or late at night. And the text will go out saying, you know, here's what we know at this point in time, we're anticipating needing crisis team lunch tomorrow. And then that starts it.
Does that go, your community-based organizations, like I know a couple of them that we have, but how far does that go? Does that go out to PTOs? Does that community-based organization, you know what I mean? When you say community-based organization, how broad of a net is that?
Right. So like I said on that one slide, when we actually get to the point of having the team, it could be any of those people, but the ones that I directly work with are the mental health professionals who've had the crisis intervention training. So you look at our partners, and if they are typically one of our, what do you, one of our CBOs who works in school, like CHOP and the USU Need Us, and, you know, all of the different agencies, you service Bureau. If it's not like that, we might be calling in people from Stand, who provide services at some school, but they're not there all the time. Or Rape Crisis Center, or Contra Costa, you know, suicide. And so they aren't necessarily at the table, but again, if they're not reaching out to us, we're reaching out to them and they, they send immediately.
Okay. Trustee Christian, I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Trustee Jamilas Mofos. The question that I have, and it's going to go back to the, with Trustee Jamilas Mofos as far as the psychologist, how many African-Americans psychologists that we do have in the district? That's something good to know.
So we will definitely keep looking. I just did the count, but I can only tell you the names, so it didn't have the ethnicity in the database that I had access to. There are 60 psychologists, because preschool is also part of our program. And we have quite a few that are dedicated in the preschool side there. But I will follow up with human resources and have them get that information on the demographic breakdown.
So I was just text, Dr. Wool, is three, would three be accurate? Because I was just texted there are three.
I would not be surprised that it's not representative.
Okay.
At all.
Okay. Okay, and the next one will be, and, and it's the CSOs. What role do the CSOs play on the campus of what our young people? Because I, I did not see them mentioned in the, in information.
Yeah, they're an important part of the crisis team. I think that's where I was saying, school site support staff. And again, it depends on what role they want to take and feel comfortable with. So they're immediately brought in, a lot of times for, in the past, I'm just going with what happened in the physical space. A CSO may come in the room or not, but actually maybe kind of finding kids, you know, finding kids and directing them to the room and looking at spaces that we might not be holding space, but kids may be congregating and really seeing it as that kind of community support for, for the kids.
Okay, yeah, because the reason why I asked that question, because I do know that the CSOs play a, a major role in everyday life on the campus or commu- communication with the young people. And, and a lot of the students come to them in many ways. And they express a lot of things. And, and the CSOs are, are the first ones online that really gets a lot of the information. And then the information is passed on to everybody else.
Very true.
See, and I'll just add in there, because both of you talked about what is going to be our COVID responses. We have students that come back that have different experiences. It's not just going to be the psychologist. We're going to have to look at each of our employee groups that interacts with students. How can they be put in a position to be able to, one, assess when there is a need? Because not everyone's going to have an overt action, but you can tell sometimes when people are troubled, so that we can get those referrals. We're going to need not just psychologist help, but we're going to have to use some of our community-based organization supports. We, we did a large contract for additional support with Seneca this year to try to target specifically our middle grades, students are, are middle schoolers. Because what we're seeing across America is that a lot of the kids that are really having overt, very visceral reactions to COVID are those middle-grade students that are your sixth, seventh, eighth graders, where they didn't have that socialization piece, and they're missing those friends. So we know that we're going to have to build in another layer of additional emotional supports as we come back. And I think as we build our summer program and as we build all of our returns, part of what many of our schools are doing for summer is looking at that SEL connection. And that it's as important as the academics to have a safe space for kids to really communicate and talk. And so this is when something's occurred. What you guys are talking about is the prevention side, is really getting to capture and catch that kid before something has elevated to a much more significant issue.
Well, that's what was on Jody's slide too. Jody, you said part of your, part of the little, the acronym, the P was to prepare, right? To prepare for crisis, to, to prevent and prepare for crisis. That's your first P. So we know if So we know if we're going back on campus, we have to prevent and prepare. We know that children have already had trauma with COVID. So then we need to be prepared for that now because they're going to come traumatized from COVID. Or we need to prevent further trauma for them having to deal with a kid taking down their mask and pretending that's funny to cough when your grandmother just died from it. So that's, we have to prevent that. What does that look like? If we're talking about the referrals that we send out now, and I don't know if it's really on a green piece of paper. It was on a green piece of paper when I was teaching, like you had to fill out the form or whatever and you send it down to your health department, your, your site healthcare workers. Is that form going to be different now because there's different red flags that we're looking for? And what is that have teachers and sites been trained on that? Like if you're trying to teach, teachers are not psychologists. We didn't go to school to have that psychology degree to where we can pick out those red flags or we can pick up on those clues. We have limited training, but if we know that the first P is to prevent and prepare, are you able and willing and have the, the protocol in place to prepare your teachers for these red flags? You know, we are all mandated reporters and we've been trained under certain things. This is different thing. Nobody has been trained for this yet, but we know it's here. We know it's, we know that when we put kids back on campus, it's coming. So what training has the district now set up to be able to handle that first P? Sorry trustee Christian, you know, my takeover spirit. I just had to ask that question before I lost it.
And I appreciate the question. I know there are a lot of discussions and a lot of training happening right now. So there's the SEL, the social emotional learning piece. And a big part of that will, is and will be how to identify. Because once you start doing that kind of work and intervention as a classroom teacher, how to identify when some stuff is coming up where a kid needs more support? So I did want to say that, we know that's a need. We're having those discussions and putting those trainings together as much as we can now. The other thing I wanted to hit on is, I, I thought of this as more the global crisis of a school or a district. I just want to let you know that crisis intervention is happening, happening on an individual basis now. We're not waiting for kids to come back. We're on the phone, we're on Zoom, we're hooking kids up with partners in the community. They're meeting in parks or on porches. And there's a lot of individual crisis intervention that, that is going on, I would say, you know, weekly as well as, you know, things like safety assessments, risk assessments. When do kids need some hospitalization or some mental health support beyond someone reaching out to them? And that, and that is true in the physical setting, usually the site psychologist or the site based people. But we've been doing a lot of outreach to these kids and families that we're not even necessarily hearing from to see what's going on, who is in crisis, who needs that support.
Yeah, and they just add, you know, from my lens, what I see is the wraparound services has to be all the way around to make sure that all of our students, if anything happens, the wraparound services there to help them in the, in the midst of these crises. So, all right, so, um, anything else trustee Jamila Smith Foles before we move on?
Um, I think are we going to do public comment and then, um, our discussion? That was supposed to be just the questions. Are we going to do public comment?
Yeah, public comment, yeah.
All right.
And I'm looking for hands and I am seeing no hands, so we would revert to discussion.
Okay, um, any comment, discussion trustee Jamila Smith Foles?
So for me, what I would be looking for from you Ms. Jody is to come back with the same type of presentation, except the meat of it is COVID response, COVID response, kids back on campus. What is, you understand what I mean? Like you having the, the, uh, space to say, we're no longer having kids meet in this room because it's too small. We are now having children meet in this room and this is how it's spaced out. This is the, the, each site has said this is their dedicated room and space for the crisis response team to do their work. You have spoken to your 60 psychologists and they're saying this is what we need. If they're saying, yo, this is too heavy, we need 15 more, then I expect you to come back and tell us that. You know what I mean? Like, does that make sense? Like I want to hear what the needs of, of everybody on that slide that you had your crisis intervention team. I would like you to come back and tell us what they need to do this correctly. Before students step on campus, this is what they need to have in place. So they will know that they will be able to do their, their job to the, their fullest capacity and that the kids are taken care of to a hundred percent and whatever that is. Whatever, whatever that looks like, I would expect a crisis, the crisis response team to be able to come back and tell me what that is. So trustee, uh, Christian, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. All right, um, I don't have any further, um, comments. So we'll move to the next discussion item. B, uh, will be discussion on the discipline matrix and process for revision. And that will be done by LaShante Smith, director of positive school climate. And Phil Johnson will discuss the current matrix and the process that is underway to begin necessary changes and revision. We turn that over to, uh, LaShante and Phil Johnson.
And I'll just introduce.
I'm sorry for one second, trustee Christian. I just want to let everybody know if you saw my eyes big, it's because my eight year old was asking me for ice cream in the middle of a meeting and I was, so that is why my eyes were big. So I just wanted to make sure that someone's like, why is she upset? No, because my eight year old was asking me something and I told her I'm in the middle of this meeting. Okay, pardon me, go ahead, Dr. Wool.
And then we'll try to make sure that we have our unscheduled scheduled break right after this one before we have the next item as part of our protocol. So I'm real pleased to have both LaShante and Phil here to talk about some of the work that's already begun as part of the SIGDA, significant disproportionality and some of the other research. And we're going to have some follow up beyond just today on what they're doing. But what we thought would be important is to say, well, here's what it was. And here's what we've started and get that discussion because just like crisis is about prevention, discipline is the same thing. If you wait until the actions already occurred, you're already two steps behind. And then if you don't learn from why are students getting in trouble? And try to find actions that are going to change that behavior before it gets chronic. That's the other piece. So we're real excited to have both Phil and LaShante talk about some things and where they think we might be headed next. And I'll let them take over from here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Phil Johnson. Um, I'm at Greenwood Academy as the principal and I work student services. LaShante is my partner.
I'll just jump right to it. Hi, good evening, LaShante Smith. I'm, and I'm leading some school climate work and my eyes just got big because this is my daughter's fourth cup of chocolate milk. Um, okay, so we're going to get started. I'm going to share my screen. As Dr. Wold said, this, um, first part will just be kind of an update of, and there we go. This first part will be an update on our discipline matrix. But before we go there, I kind of wanted to ground ourselves around what positive school climate work encompasses. And as you heard from Phil already state, positive school climate work and student services are really not separate. They're together. So you cannot have student services and support students without positive climate. And you cannot have positive climate without a support for students. And so I wanted to take us back to where we first started discussing positive school climate and it was around 2017. And our district kind of came up with a working theory of action. And it was all around using data based and data driven decision making processes and using that multi tiered systems of support. So in this multi tiered systems of support, we're thinking of how do we set structures and systems to support all of our students in our district? And if we're able to really align our systems, then we will start to see district wide positive relationship based practices that are supportive of all members of WCCUSD. And we really wanted to ground ourselves in restorative practices, positive behavior interventions and supports and trauma informed practices. And so when you think about positive school climate, there's a lot again that it involves. So it's not just climate lives over here, but climate really encompasses so much. So it's leadership, it's relationships, it's teaching and learning, it's health and safety. It's an environment and it's how the environment is set up. And then when we look at these different pillars, we also want to make sure that we're grounded again in trauma response practices and trauma informed practices, healing centered practices. We want to make sure that racial justice and equity is embedded throughout our process. And then there comes the social emotional wellness piece along with student family and community voice. So before we talked about the matrix, I just wanted to kind of ground us in what we're actually, our bigger picture is. So the board passed a resolution in 2017. I'm just going to highlight some of the key parts of that resolution. The big part back then was to eliminate willful defiance as a grounds for suspension. And I'll talk about how that was like a tiered process to eventually eliminate all willful defiance suspensions. The other key point of the, um, positive school climate resolution was to reduce all exclusionary disciplinary processes, deepen and extend those tiered behavioral interventions I was just talking about, increase instructional time and then reduce racial and special education disparities in school discipline processes. And so in order to start eliminating defiance suspension, uh, we started with, at the first day of the 2018, 2019 school year, elementary defiance suspensions would be eliminated. And then on the first day of the 2019 to 2020 school year, secondary school defiance suspensions would be eliminated. We also highlighted some really key kind of processes or things that needed to be in place. One was the requirement of reentry conferences and intervention plans for any student returning from suspension. We wanted to consider referral of students to law enforcement as a last resort. And then it was written in the resolution that the principals at each school site would consult with the district designee. And at that point in time, it was the school executive directors before suspending any African American student or any student in special education. And so because of this, a discipline matrix was created. And that matrix consisted of different processes that need to be put in place. And who was sitting at the table at the time the matrix was created was a, a group of various stakeholders that came together to really look at what was happening in the district. And then how can we make sure that our processes were consistent? And so the matrix has been implemented, I would say now for two school years. And throughout those years, um, we wanted to look at the data. So did the action of creating this matrix have any impact on our discipline processes? And our disproportionality or overall suspension rates? So I'm going to quickly click us here to review the matrix. So if you haven't had a chance, it's linked in the agenda. But really our matrix kind of aligned to a three tier type response system. So there were three levels. So level one was, I'm sorry, one second. Really sorry about that. Alrighty, um, so as you can see, our matrix had different levels of responses. So we started with level one and really the level one responses were put here to ensure that teachers, staff and administrators were doing everything they could to keep students inside of the classroom. So if you think of level one, that was like a universal response. Level two was a level up from level one. So it was like, okay, this happens. What is the next thing that you would do if you're progressing through this discipline matrix? Then we had level three responses. If you notice in our matrix, we had possible interventions and then possible consequences for each level. And the goal is, and again, we need to strengthen this process, but the goal was to make sure that students have interventions at each level. And it's very important to remind us that an intervention is different than a consequence. So you can give a consequence, but there should still be an intervention to intervene on that behavior to hopefully reduce the behavior from occurring again. And so we wanted it to be a two part thing, an intervention and a consequence. And if you're given the consequence, you should also give an intervention. And if you're given an intervention, you may or may not give a consequence that time around, but you want to make sure that you're doing interventions. And then we had level three responses. Again, level three responses included interventions and consequences. And notice at the bottom of the matrix, consequences can be punitive and consequences can be restorative. But there are interventions and consequences. And then there was a section, um, which was mandatory recommendations for expulsion and mandatory expulsion, um, as referenced in our ed code. So then the actual matrix is on the bottom. And as you can see, there's different instances of behavior. And then there's the level response, so where you should start. So for example, tardiness, it's a level one response. Tardiness, cutting class or truancy would never be a level, you would never start at a level two response or a level three, you would always start at a level one. And the level ones, um, if you didn't notice, were not responses that required out of school suspension. Level one and level two were still in school consequences and in school interventions. Level three is where we start our out of school suspension. So if you notice in the matrix, you'll see what starts with a level three. So under like controlled substances arranging to sell, negotiate to sell or sold the prescription drug soma. That was a level three response. So that was, you are starting with, um, a potential suspension. However, if you remember from the top, there should be an intervention paired with that suspension. And then as I spoke about before, there was a mandatory, when students come back from suspension, how are they welcomed back into campus? And then what supports are put in place to ensure that students are linked to an intervention and they're continuously being monitored through that intervention? And so I'm not going to go through every response, but I wanted to just note that our discipline matrix um, was very, we tried to be, I'll say we, I didn't, I actually wasn't on the group that it was already kind of created when I got here, but we tried when we were looking to really be explicit around not using suspension as a first response. Really making sure that we're using interventions and other restorative means before you're sending a student out. The other thing that I'll just mention is that there are some mandatory recommendations for expulsion. So we included that here. And then in ed code, there were some mandatory, uh, report to law enforcement. So in red here, you would see anything that ed code required to be reported to law enforcement if a suspension took place. Okay, so let me toggle back to this, oops. I can't. Let me stop my share. Okay, I'm going to go back to our presentation. Okay. Bear with me, now we're back here. Perfect, okay. So again, where did we want to go when we were thinking about this matrix? We wanted to really strengthen our tier one process. That's a universal support system. What are we doing consistent at each campus? What does it look like? What kind of teams do we have? What are our vision and expectations? Do we have behavioral expectations? How do we teach those expectations? How are, how do we use data? Like how is each site using data to then inform their decisions around discipline? Um, I'm going to stop, actually I'm going to go here. I'm going to stop there. Actually, I'm going to go a couple more slides because it's going to make sense and then we can stop. Uh, so in looking at our discipline matrix, we know that there are many gaps. And I think one of the gaps is how it was implemented and how it was introduced to sites. So again, we had this matrix. We said, hey, we're going to start using this matrix. We're going to start eliminating defiance suspensions. We want you to do this, that and the other. But I don't think there was necessarily explicit training on kind But I don't think there was necessarily explicit training on kind of the reason why and how to use the matrix. When we look at our discipline data from this school year, we know that it's not accurate. We only have four total incidents for, from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. So as of right now, there's only four incidents. And due to COVID, we know that discipline looks different. And we're still trying to establish that process of what does discipline look like during the COVID era on Zoom, right? And so if a student is removed from a Zoom room, how do you report that? If a student is muted and not allowed to speak during the class, how do you report that? So we know that there's been a lack of consistency in reporting among sites. And then looking pre-COVID, because remember, the discipline matrix, the whole goal of the matrix was to reduce our disproportionality and to reduce our suspension rate. And so this was data that our state has from last school year, which was two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. And we know that two thousand twenty had an interruption. However, we were in school up until March. So if you think about this data was up until March, what I want you to see is that our overall rate of suspension for all of our students was three point five percent. So three point five percent of our students were suspended at least once, okay? But then when you look at our rate for African-American students, the rate is nine point eight percent. And so again, if the overall rate of suspension was three point five percent, our African-American student suspension rate was nine point eight percent. African-American students had the largest disproportionality when you think about suspensions and if you're comparing it to the overall district rate. In addition, if you look at other subgroups, if you look at a total of three point five percent, the only other subgroup that went over was our American Indian subgroup. Some say it, they just met the data reporting where it could be public. But if you look at the number of students suspended, it was four. So they just made that threshold to be able to report the data. Otherwise, the number is like too low to really make a comparison because of the overall enrollment of students. So if you look at our American Indian students, but then you look at our African-American students, we are still highly disproportionate in our suspension of African-American students. And so what have we been doing? So about two years ago, I joined a group of different professionals throughout Contra Costa County to look at racial and ethnic disproportionality in school suspensions, but also in our juvenile justice system. The school-to-prison pipeline is real. It's not just a myth. And what we know is that when we push our students out of school, we are pushing them into the criminal justice system. And students who are pushed out of classrooms and/or pushed out of school in suspensions are three times more likely to be involved in our juvenile justice system. So a group of us got together and we have been working on a project to reduce our disparities in our practices in school that would then reduce disparities in our juvenile justice system, which would hopefully reduce disparities in our criminal justice system. And so through this work, we developed a capstone project. And so our Contra Costa County District Attorney is in this, our Chief of Police is on this project, as well as our Office of Reentry and Juvenile Justice, our probation manager, and our Assistant DA, and also our public defender. So it's a cross-disciplinary team trying to really take a look at what's happening. And what I can tell you is that we did a deep analysis with a group called Impact Justice. And we gave them all of our data. So we gave them all of our discipline data for the last three years. And we asked them to look at, do you see any discrepancies? Do you see any consistencies? Do you see one group of students being identified for out-of-school suspensions over another group? So we asked them to really do that deep dive analysis. And the preliminary results, which we'll talk about later, but they hope to come and share it with this exact committee, is that when you look at our students and what is happening, and we still are not consistent in our consequences for our black students. And particularly, our black girls are receiving harsher consequences and harsher days suspended from school. So I'm not going to go into their data, but know that we have noticed a pattern. And that's why it's time again to look at that matrix that was supposed to reduce our disproportionality and supposed to change our practices and really start to think about what else is needed in order to really implement this and implement it the right way. So we're now in a revision of our matrix. One, to include COVID responses, so we know that discipline will look different when we come back to campus. So what will that look like? Two, we have to get another multidisciplinary group together. There's a lot of community-based organizations that want to work with us and other stakeholder groups that want to come together to work on the revision of the matrix while considering new policies that have been put in place, such as the removal of SROs. So our first matrix was based on having SROs on campus. So now, when we go back to school and SROs are off of campus, what will our processes look like? And then really looking at those other processes that were defined in the matrix, like, hey, calling someone before you suspend an African-American student or calling someone before you suspend a student in special education, did that work? If not, what do we need to put in place to ensure that that process was done? One, to fidelity, and two, if it was done to fidelity and not working, what else can we do? And then really using the data from that Impact Justice group to determine our next steps in the matrix. So I'm going to stop on the matrix for right now. Mr. Johnson, did you have anything to add? Sorry.
No, you're doing fine.
And so as we move to clarifying questions, we thought that these two tied together because we just talked about crisis. But now we're showing you kind of the other side of the envelope for your questions.
Okay, thank you. And so trustee Smith falls.
So my first question is, does every school have a climate team?
Good question. Every school was supposed to have a climate team. And the last time we checked, which was the beginning of last school year before COVID, there were about, I want to say it was like forty out of all of our schools had an active climate team.
Okay, and then do the, you said that they were supposed to call someone and consult with that person. Is that the same person that they do now? Who do they call now?
Right now, so there is no, they were supposed to call executive directors, but that position no longer exists. So I'm not sure who they are calling now.
We'll be Ann and Julio.
So they were calling Ann and Julio before too, so they're still calling Ann and Julio then.
They were also calling me.
Okay, and then what? So what's the timeline for the next steps to happen? Like, what's the time, because we, it seems, it seems hard to go back when we don't have a matrix of discipline to go back to. So what's the timeline for that to happen?
So I would say immediately. I've been wanting to get the team together for a while. And I know that there's another team that's going to be meeting to discuss the removal of SROs and putting in a plan. So I was hoping today that we can like kind of finalize and get a process around gathering multiple stakeholders together. We have a, what was it called? A Positive School Climate Working Group that had already met. And I had been sending them out like, hey, you know, we're waiting and waiting to go back and things like that. So to answer your question, immediately. Like, we're just trying to get the group back together and trying to really refine our processes of like putting these different groups together instead of working in silos.
Okay, and then this is not a question, but it is a comment I forgot to make. I really do value homeroom as a space where we could do some real work. And I want to just put that out there. Like, I know that there, if, when homeroom is done correctly and homeroom is done, that it's structured, then we can really do some social emotional work in homeroom. We can really do some race and justice equity in homeroom. We can really do some positive PBIS work in homeroom. Like, we can really do some work in homeroom when it's structured and done correctly. So I just want to put that out there. But trustee Christian, I think that's all of my questions. Again, LaShante, Ms. Smith, I would love for your team to come back with us when they have something that, that same slide, except COVID. You know what I mean? That same slide, except no SROs on campus. That same slide, except, you know what I mean? Like, that same slide with everything that you did. Because I like the slides that I've seen. I just like the slides that I've seen as they're adapted to what we're about to start trying to implement.
Right.
So that's, sorry trustee Christian, that was like a question slash comment.
All right, no problem. Okay, the question I have, and I want to go back to the matrix. When you mentioned the decision-makers at the table, you know, put the discipline policy together. And my question is, were the CSOs like being involved in this? Reason why I'm asking that question because the CSOs deal with the bulk of all the issues every day on the campus. And we exclude them out of the equation. So were any CSOs involved in this?
So I wasn't on the original working group, so I can't answer who was on that original working group. But as you know, all three, or sorry, Mr. Christian, I was able to do some training, some targeted trainings with the CSO group. And from those trainings, there were a couple CSOs who reached out to me who wanted to be on this revision for the discipline matrix. So I still have their emails and I've been contacting them, telling them like, hey, as soon as we get the group together, you will be on it. So yes, they will be on the revision. I can't answer if they were on the first one.
Yeah, I remember that because I was one of those CSOs that
You were.
requested to be on there.
Yep.
You know, but now I'm on the other side.
Yeah.
So, so, and, and, and that's very important because the CSOs have to be involved. Every school site, from the high school to the middle school, they need to be involved because everyday issues like discipline issues, things happen. And, but the thing is, CSOs, they, they come in the mix and they have to cool things down. They have to, it's a lot that they have to deal with. And so they have to be involved in every aspect of every being part of the discipline team. And the next question I'm going to ask is
Arthur, can I, can I add into that please, please, real quickly?
Yes.
So the CSO should be meeting with their administration at least once to twice per week. They should be having those discussions about what's going on on campus. And the administration should give the CSO's a voice as far as discipline is concerned. But and then another thing that, as the CSO's, I mean, the administration needs to share that discipline that discipline matrix with the CSO's, so they're familiar with it as well. So I don't know if that's happening at every campus, but we were trying to make that happen.
Right, and, and, and it has not been happening. And so that was one of the reasons I wanted the CSO twos and the principals to come together so they can begin to build the relationship so they can work on that campus and making sure the safety of all of our young people, making sure that things are, you know, everybody's working together. And so that's what I wanted. And so that's, well, let me just put it this way, it, it, it has to happen. And so
So if I can jump in real quick, if you look at the panelists that we have today, you have Phil and you have LaShante. You just had Jody talking from the crisis response. Michael Booker is dark, but he's here, he's not on camera. And then you have Ann and Julio. So what you have here is you have the operations team that's focusing with the principals. You have our student services, you have our climate, you have our crisis. You have all of the team members together that focus. So that the idea is that out of this committee, we're hearing that message and we're taking that back, that this is how we're going to operate as an organization with synergy to connect. And so what you're asking for is what we're trying to build, that there is that synergistic effort with all of the stakeholders that have a key role in that communications sitting here right now.
Yes.
And then you have in the audience, Kristin Hardy, who reminds me that part of our significant disproportionality is we're hiring three more psychologists. And we're focusing on those that are representative and/or bilingual to hit our DLI schools. So our focus is to bring in more staff even starting now as we go forward.
Okay.
So I just wanted to add that in because it aligns to what
Yes.
we're just talking about.
All right, thank you. And then also, the other question is, this, you know, like, when things happen on the campus, you know, and I really didn't see much of this, you know, as being part in the district, is that the parents were never called or seeing the parents involved or coming to the school, really dealing, other words, the parents be left out of the equation. And then when we talk about like discipline or you talk about suspension, my question is, why has the parents were never included to bring them and getting them involved in, in the discipline issues that, that goes on with the students?
I can't speak for each specific site, but what I can say is that parents should definitely be involved in any discipline regarding a student. And part of the reason why that matrix included the required reentry conference was just that, to get parents to come to the campus to be involved with, okay, your child may have been suspended or this incident may have happened, but how can we work together collaboratively to put a plan in place, you know, for the further success of the student? And so parents should be a part of that process. But we also had a clause in that where that if a parent is not able to come for any reason, that the students should still receive that same support. And then the parents or guardian or family member would be advised of what was happening.
Okay. That's all the question I have right now. We open up a public comment.
And I'm looking to see if any hands go up. And I don't see any hands. So we're back to board comments.
All right, trustee Smith falls.
So I think that this is, again, what we, what I would need is it to come back through the lens of COVID. All of this to come back through a COVID lens, but those people that I'm looking for at the table of this matrix, I want to see Michael Booker's name there. I don't know if he was there before, but I want to see him there now. Because there's a safety lens that comes through this and discipline is a safety issue too. So I would like to see his name there. I would exactly, I would definitely want to see CSOs on that list to have representation of coming through. Of course, psychologists on that list, counselors on that list. The people who are going to do the, the day-to-day implementation of this, I want to make sure that that representation is on that list. And again, I like the idea, it's, I'm really looking for exactly what you showed me, except if a child takes a mask off, this is happening. This is the intervention, this is the consequence. If, because at elementary school, we don't have CSOs. So I need to know what, what's the consequence? Are teachers now going to break up those fights? You understand what I'm saying? Like, what does that look like? Are they just verbally warning because they're not going to go in to that situation? Or, so again, I'm looking for what you told me, which was intervention and consequence for a specific situations that you guys at that table know are going to happen when kids are back on campus. A small cohort group of kids back on campus or a kid back, when kids, any child that puts their foot on campus, I want this already in place. So then nobody has to build the airplane while it's in the air or whatever that saying is. The airplane is built and we all flying and it's been through safety checks and we're all fine. Because if not, we're going to have, we're going to have this apportionality. People are going to apply these rules any way they want to apply these rules to whoever they wanted to apply these rules. So if we don't have it written down, don't do this. Do you know what, do you, is that clear? So that's kind of where I am. I really would like every site to have a climate team because like, we're safety and climate subcommittee, like, that needs to happen on sites. And I like the idea of, LaShante, you were telling me that you, or sorry, Ms. Smith, you were telling me that you guys are going to firm up how those reportings are happening so we can get some real data about. Because I do want to know, how many kids have been muted? How many kids have been kicked out of a classroom? What are we telling teachers about that? Do not kick these kids out of the classroom. And if you do, you got to report it because we need to have the data. How many black children are being Because we need to have the data. How many black children are being kicked out? How many, like that, what's access? So access still looks like, are you able to participate in the classroom? Because it's just like one of those things that if I kick you out of the classroom, but I don't send you to the office, but you in the hallway. You still not getting what's required for you to have, which is that education in the room. So that happens in Zoom too. So I would love to have. That kind of data come back to us. Um. I think that's it for me, trustee Christian. That's what I'm looking for to come back.
Okay, thank you, uh, trustee Smith falls. Um, and I would just like to add to that. Will be that for, um, you know, dealing with discipline, like our parents and kids. Needs to sign something because kids are going to do things with their, like the mask. You're going to have somebody, it's not going to follow through. And so we, we need to look at, okay, how do we deal with that? But I think in the process, we should have. Uh, the student and the parent side or, you know, a, agreement and understanding of rules to follow. So everybody be on the same page. Um, so that's what I, I would like to see happen. Um, added in the midst of the equation of this.
So, um, I'll say that I know that we are in process right now of having the team convene to. Bring forward a recommendation for a masking policy that not only is for students, but also for staff. So that everyone is clear on that and what the consequences are going to be. We're also looking at an updated policy as it pertains to visitors on campus, the idea that. Parents may not be able to come on right now based on where we're at. So all of those, the team, um, that you see here. Plus, uh, Kristen behind, they will be working on getting something there that will come to the board this month. For us to have that conversation as we go forward. So they're working on that right now. And then I was wrong again when I said three, it's six new psychologists for next year. Are already built into the budget. So I keep getting corrected on the things that I've done, didn't say right.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Christian, before we go on break, it's just, I want to make sure that we all understand. That if we continue to say the check is in the mail. Eventually people gonna stop believing you, them bill collectors gonna stop believing you. Like we are, this, I hear a lot of the check is in the mail. We're coming up with it, it's, we're developing it, we're, we're thinking about it, like. Like before you ask another question or before that next bill drop, you're going to have to start paying these other bills. Like, so I need, for me, it's like. Bring back the paper, bring back to show me that this is the policy in place. This is what, this is the thing that's in, this is the mass policy in place. This is the seat, the. What is it? The crisis response team paper in place. This is the, this, the matrix in place. Because all of the people on the screen are saying they're, they're wanting to do it. They're, they need to act, so I want whatever resource they need to get it done. I need the district to let them do that. Like whatever it is that they need to get the questions and the answers and the paper and to do the work that they need to do. Then whoever's in the way, get out of the way. So these people can get what they need done, done. They know how to do it. Like they already did it, they showed it, they brought up a whole slide, like we spent twenty minutes on looking that they know how to do it. Ms. Smith should have the, the, the freedom to do it, like she has the people, she knows it, so do it. Like, you know what I mean? Ms. Jody should have, do it, go do it. Mr. Booker should have, go do, like, we got to get out of people's way. Like they know what to do, they, they need the resources to do it and the time, the space, the support or whatever they need. We need to give it to them so we can start bringing back some paper. Because again, I don't believe that check is in the mail. Because I've been waiting for it and I've been look checking the mailbox every day and I don't see no check. So I'm checking every day for this paper about we ready to go back to school and this is what it looks like and I don't see it. So. Trustee Christian, I may need a break. Thank you, Jesus.
Okay, thank you trustee, uh, Smith falls and, um, we'll take what five minute break?
I could five twenty-five.
Alright.
So move. Thank you trustee Christian.
Okay.
Okay, we are back recording again, trustee Christian.
Okay, thank you and we'll continue, uh, to proceed on with the agenda item. Uh, we would go to. Uh, item C, um, Harbor Way program and, and Dr. Wall, will you go from there?
Yeah, so. Harbor Way has had many different existences in our district. Last year in spring, right before the pandemic, we were still working on where would be the physical location for this. It's sometimes called the community day school. It has many different functions. Phil Johnson and LaShante have both been looking at other options for how we can best utilize Harbor Way. And, and as the pandemic has come, it's also had us rethinking. Everything as you just heard, we're rethinking the whole concept of suspensions and the whole discipline matrix. And that research as we look at what's happened in the past. But we're also looking at what is the process when students get expelled, what types of services? So Phil's going to give you a brief overview of Harbor View and some thoughts. So we can start our pathway moving forward.
So actually, uh, LaShante and I worked on a, um, on a PowerPoint. So LaShante, go ahead and go with, do the overview and then we'll answer questions afterwards.
Okay. So as Dr. Wall just said presently, um, we've been thinking about how to redesign Harbor Way. And Harbor Way has been many different things in our district for a while. And I know when Phil and I. Started working student services a couple of years back, I would just say that Harbor Way. Was not a beneficial program, if you will. It was not supporting. Our most vulnerable students in the way that it should have provided support. And so right before COVID hit, we had a board meeting and we were trying to get Harbor Way a location. Harbor Way was at Crespey, but due to, uh, size constraints, the program needed another location. And so we were trying to co-locate Harbor Way at Coronado Elementary School. In a separate classroom, um, away from the school program. However, that was not approved by the school board and then we went into shutdown literally that next Monday. And so now as we've been on this kind of COVID. Distance learning break or distance learning model, we've been trying to think about. What will Harbor Way look like when we come back and what do we want the program to be? And so as Dr. Wald stated, Harbor Way should be a community day school. And a community day school as outlined in ed code is a school for students who have been expelled. Students who have been referred by a school attendance review, review board, so the SARB. Or probation or any high risk youth referred through a district level process. So what that last bullet point means is any student in need of additional support. Who is not making successful or meaningful gains on their campus. Should be allowed the opportunity to come to a community day school with the hope that there are more embedded supports to truly. Um, support the student in their time of need or their time of adjustment. And so I just added some key points here around what community day schools are. And I really want us to think of high quality. So our community day school should be. A high quality program with high level expectations and there should be a intense focus on pro-social skills. Building student self-esteem and resiliency. So with that, we should be partnering with other agencies, other community groups. And other stakeholder groups to really make this program all that it could be. Um, community day schools should have low teacher-student ratios. And then they should have embedded supports within those schools. So they should have school counselors, they should have social workers, psychologists. Uh, case managers. So any other. Community agency or collaborative agency that works within our district should also be assigned to the community day school program. So that the students there who are our most vulnerable students still receive support. So during this time. We're trying to think, we've been thinking about, um, what are the opportunities and next steps as we redesign Harbor Way? So one was the location of site. As I stated, right before COVID, we had the school board meeting, it was not approved. To be at Coronado and we haven't revisited where will Harbor Way be located. And so Phil and I have been bouncing off some ideas and thinking about potentially combining the program. At Sylvester Greenwood Academy. What we noticed, um, from our past data and the reason why we wanted to pick a school in Richmond is that most of the referrals were coming from Richmond schools. But not only that, uh, our transportation and our bus lines were able to get to Richmond schools. Uh, through their already existing kind of like lines to get to, um, a campus. So we wanted to potentially combine the program at Sylvester Greenwood Academy. And it would be like a student services hub. So Sylvester Greenwood Academy is our alternative high school. And then we would open up Harbor Way for, um, K through eight and survive, uh, provide support. We've also been thinking about redesigning Harbor Way, um, to be a place for students who reach those twenty days of suspension. And are referred for expulsion and are kind of in limbo. So what currently happens right now is that when a student. Um, has a disciplinary consequence and is put up for expulsion, there's a lag time. It sometimes takes twenty to thirty days for that student to actually go before, um, a board or to receive their expulsion hearing. To find out the next steps. So within that time, you can have a student potentially out of school for thirty days not receiving support. So we're thinking about like, how do we provide support during that time through this model? How do we strengthen behavior support during that time? How do we provide opportunities for students to continue to receive education? Can we provide virtual opportunities, um, for credit recovery or to make sure that there's not that lag? And students aren't receiving any type of educational support? And then how do we truly collaborate with other community groups to support our students, um, in this type of model? And so that is where we are right now and I'll let Mr. Johnson jump in if he wants to say anything.
I just want to add, we were really concerned about students slipping through the cracks. And not receiving the support that they need to re-entergrade back into their schools and that was happening a lot. Um, and there was, the rehab wasn't really set up at the time. So LaShante and I have. And she does a great job of looking at different resources that we can add to help students. So when they do go back to their campus, they'll, they'll able to re-acclimate with the little to no difficulty. And, and, and another thing was that we had some students that had been at Harbor Way before we took over student services. That had been there for two, three, four years. And that's not, and that's not what we need to do. So, um, LaShante was good about, if a person came into the program, we had time limits. So we wanted to get them this support within this time and we wanted to get them back into school. So that was our goal.
And I will say, just to throw it out there, that Harbor Way has a very negative narrative around our district. So when the thought of Harbor Way was going to any school, there was a lot of pushback from schools around, why do we have to have that program at our school? Or why are these students coming here? How will they be separated from our population? So it was just a lot of, um. Narratives and so it's really about re, redefining the narrative of what Harbor Way is and these are not. Students, these are still our district students and how do we support them and how do we ensure? Or that they have the embedded support within the program, uh, which. Quite frankly, there wasn't embedded support within Harbor Way. There was the teacher and there was classroom aides, but there needed to be targeted support for behavior, for mental health interventions, for counseling, things like that.
And that was the narrative, to send your students to Harbor Way so you can get rid of them, but no. The expectation is they will be coming back to you within a time limit and you need to accept them.
And so part of it is, as I started researching this and didn't quite even understand it myself. Was we've got a teacher right now that really is connected to nowhere. Because all of this time there, so we're going to have that person while we're going through this process. Working with Phil and have Phil basically make sure that that person is connected to. Do what we can with students right now, but we want to get something in place for the fall. That is much more robust and that's why the team's here today.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll, uh, go to trustee Smith falls for question.
How many, how many students, teachers, staff are at Harbor Way now?
Uh, so before we went into COVID, there were, actually. We didn't have students because we didn't have a location. So we spent, um, let's say from August to March. Trying to find a location. However, we had several students who were referred to the program. Who had to be served at their regular school and or were placed in a county school. And that number was about, I would say eleven students. And then we, um, as far as teacher, there's one full-time teacher. And then he had four part-time aides.
Okay.
But then you also had that social emotional support. Didn't you have a, a psychologist going there?
That was me, Phil.
I thought you had some interns with you as well.
Oh, um, yeah, I kind of created, just pulling different people going there, but, um. Yeah, we didn't have, there wasn't, um, anyone allocated for the program.
So, so nothing's happening is basically it. It's out in limbo.
So what you need, what you're going to need for this, for Harbor Way to exist in the model that you think would. Best serve students is you're going to need psychologists, counselors, dis- disciplined personnel, CSOs. All of these things dedicated to this program. Not shared among everybody else, but dedicated to this program who are there to make sure that this doesn't become a place. Where kids are there two to three years. It's a place to where they're there and then they are transitioned back to their home school. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. And then these are, you, did you say K through eight Harbor Way? There's, there's kids K through eight who are out for twenty days plus?
So. Believe me or not, yes, but, uh, we were really strict on not taking anyone in kindergarten, first or second grade. So our youngest student was in third grade, which is still young, but there are students who. Face harsh disciplinary consequences as young as kindergarten.
Okay, how do we fix that? Secondary question. How, how do we make that unacceptable that you have a kindergarten or first, second, third, I will go four and five. But kindergarten, first, second, third, who are not. I need another matrix. This is what I mean. There has to be a specific matrix with intervention and consequences for the elementary level. That you don't think Harbor Way is an option because it shouldn't be. Harbor Way shouldn't be an option for K through, now listen. There's always exceptions to that rule, LaShante, and you know, or Ms. Smith, and you know what I mean? Like if. You know, Billy's packing, that's different. I'm talking about like, I want to know why we have a four, a kindergarten, that's a five, six, seven, eight-year-old. In a, in a position to where we're saying you can't function in your home school. Like there's some more work that we need to do. Trustee Christian, my ask is that we do some deep, more deep diving into that and academic committee will also take that on. There's some work that we have to do that Harbor Way is a. Harbor Way is an option for those kids, um, that age group. I have to say that I personally have a, uh. Soft spot for continuation schools. I started my career in this district at a continuation school. I know the bad reputation that it has and that it gets and it's unwarranted. Those kids at the continuation schools are just the ones that got caught, everybody doing the dirt. They just got caught. So it's like I, that's unwarranted and I want to make sure that we set out to change that narrative. So.
We're working on changing the narrative now because as a high school principal, I'll tell you that I was looking forward to sending my kids to Harbor. I mean, to, to Greenwood, but I'm not just taking anybody to Greenwood anymore. We're really trying to change that narrative. We're looking at students that have the possibility to excel. We look at their attendance, we look at their grades, we look at their discipline. And those are the students that we're taking now. We're not just taking anybody that the high schools feel like they can just dump off on us.
Okay, I really appreciate hearing that. I, I really do. Um. Okay, like you guys have for me, this is not a question, but I'll come back to comment. I'll wait. I'm, I'm going to get myself together, trustee Christian. That's my last question. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're muted, trustee Christian?
Oh, sorry. Uh, I guess what I have, um, well, I'm going to. What is some of the issues that causes students to e- end up there? Like, you know, you say K through, uh, sixth grade. What, what'd be, what are some of the issues that causes them to, they have to be placed there?
Off the top of my head, we had referrals last year, or not last year, but when we were in session. If you're speaking specifically to students who were in grades K through two, those referrals were for students who were, quote, physically aggressive, eloping from the classroom, so like running away from the classroom and not staying in the class or threatening behavior. And again, we pushed back on all of those referrals. But those were some, the students who were there at the more secondary level, with the exception of the third, fourth grader who was there, it was, it was fighting. So physical aggression. And there was also a couple of students there who had brought weapons to school.
Okay. And, no, just but,
we, we really tried to look at prevention. LaShante bought the game, I mean, brought this to the game where she was looking at data and looking at everybody's suspension rates. And we were keeping track of that from the beginning. So like, who is getting those high? Who's got one through, through five suspensions? Who's got one through 10 suspensions? So we can try to intervene and, and try to get them support. So they don't have to get to that level. But you know, some students slip through the cracks.
Okay. I see. It's, it's a lot of, I, I see it's a lot that, that happens in there. That, that's it for now. I, I'll come back with some comments. We'll open up a public comment.
And we do have public comment. Guthrie, I'm setting it up so you can unmute. And we have two more after that. So we definitely have public comment this time. Guthrie, you're first.
Thank you. It was mentioned earlier that Crespi, that Harbor Way was at Crespi. That was for four years, my first four years as principal at One Crespi Middle School. Guthrie Fleishman, by the way, principal at One Crespi. And I just wanted to say to the point that, that trustee Smith Foles just mentioned, I think a couple of other folks touched on about the, the presence of Harbor Way on the campus. For the entire four years, Harbor Way was value-added to our campus. There were no incidents of violence between Crespi students and Harbor Way students. And when I say none, I mean literally there were zero in four years. The staff became very much a part of our school community. Mr. Nazar did a fantastic job of, of not only supporting his students, but oftentimes at the end of the Harbor Way day, he'd stick around. And when there were things going on in the community, he would stick around to help and, and support the safety of the Crespi campus after the, the school day was ended. Also want to say, you know, Dr. Shin, Mr. Franco, Mr. Johnson, and, and Ms. Smith were tremendously supportive of this, the two schools co-locating. And, and for me, you know, supervising two school campuses. And again, I just, I, I can't reiterate enough. I know there's a lot of trepidation and there's a lot of like othering and, and those kids and all of that stuff. It just never happened. The kids were sweet. They were great. You know, some of them had varying different levels of trauma that we, you know, we tried to support and do our best. But it was a really committed team. The aides were fantastic. And, and I can't, like I said, value-added for the entire four years.
Thank you, Guthrie. Our next comment is for Naz Hidari.
Good afternoon, Principal Hidari from Grant Elementary School. The only reason I am speaking up is six years ago, when I took Grant over, we had a very low population of African-American students, however, a large number of English learners left next. There were 152 suspensions in 2014, 15, prior to me becoming principal at Grant. It was mind-boggling. The first year, what I had to do is document, document, document. We had children who were in our NSH classes who should have had mental health services that were not being served properly. They were literally being 51/50 because we didn't have the skillset to support them. We also had Gen Ed students who were being sent out of the classroom, farmed out. The school had three school community outreach workers the prior year. They were used to run detention halls and to keep the community out of the campus. And the reason I, I'm bringing this to you, I had taught at Olinda, and this was like breaking my heart that we are dealing with our community the, the way they had been dealt with. Or students feeling zero respect for any adult on campus because all they saw was unnecessary discipline. I had the blessing of having Seneca Family of Agencies as a partner through their unconditional education as part of the grant. There were three of our schools. It was Ford, Verde, and Grant. Last whole year, I used site budgets to bring my UE coach back to my campus. I only had five suspensions last year. If you go through the discipline data of Grant, we found alternative methods to serve our kids. We trained, my staff were kicking and screaming, not wanting to get trauma-informed education and professional development. I was taken to UTR representatives because I made teachers collaborate on how they should be looking at students differently. To this day, I will say, Grant has established and re, rebranded itself where we are everywhere posting positive news. Our students thoroughly love our adults. And I'm taking so much time of your, your time because this passionate work that I do, the kids across our school district are all of our kids. And it's mind-boggling when adults want to get rid of children. I have fought over and over to make sure that there are mental health, health services at our school sites. You wonder why a little kindergartner at age five is being sent to Harbor Way? It's because our kids are going through so much trauma that they can't even identify what they're going through. I used to have the greatest partner in the entire universe, Mindful Life Project. We, all of our students were going through for 30 minutes a day with their teacher or one of the Mindful Life educators. They put, just put, put everything aside. They weren't giving the mental health services. What they were doing is they were providing the time and space for kids to find their healing. I don't know what happened to little Joey before he came in, but he knew that he could go into our mindful corner and practice what he had been taught. And he could bring himself to attend to academics. Grant is no longer one of the priority schools as far as academics. And I attest to that to two great partners I had, Seneca Family of Agencies and Mindful Life Project. Because without them, Grant would have had 152 suspensions every single year. And it takes dedication from admin teams. It takes the partnership between our bargaining units with one another and knowing that we're here to serve kids. We are not to just brag about what we do academically, but we are really, you know, if we have the hashtag whole child, whole community, we need to embrace every single person in our community. And if we're not doing that, we're just, you know, if we're not walking the walk, then why are we here? We need to get up. So thank you for your time and I apologize, but I just had to speak my piece.
Thank you so much. And as luck would have it, you've gotten middle school, you just got elementary, we've got Jose De Leon who would like to speak. So we got high school too. Jose?
Good afternoon, everyone. I think the presentation, I, this is the right direction for, for our schools and our districts. One of the things that Mr. Hasher always tells us is, you know, your best discipline is a good lesson plan. So we need to make sure that we start there with our teachers and follow it up with additional support that our students need. Traumas, we know it's in their lives and we need the right people on campus to be able to support them through it. Also, we need to prepare our students. If a student is expelled, they're expelled for one semester or two semesters, and then they should be coming back to their campus. Also, Mr., Mr. Fleishman gave thanks to Mr. Nazar. I had a chance to talk, work with Mr. Nazar when we had the small necessary schools. Omega over at Richmond High. And him and his team did a great job of taking students that were deficit in credits, helping them for a year or so, and then coming back to the regular high school. It was the, the buffer between the high school and Gompers back in 15 years ago. So the continued work on campus on helping teachers understand how to work with students is very important. And that's the only way, once we make those connections with the students, we'll be able to really support them to find a road in their life. But there is still a lot of work to be done. There's still a lot of, a lot of work. Also, I would recommend for the, for the security team, especially the secondaries. We all have teacher handbooks that explains how to use the discipline matrix, what to do about attendance. It's pretty comprehensive. Some of those handbooks are up to 50 pages long because it deals with a lot of stuff. But if you check out those handbooks, there's a lot of information that will let you know how a secondary works. I don't know if elementaries have handbooks like that. I'm sure they, they, they do. But that handbook will give you insights of, of what is expected. In all handbooks, of course, go hand in hand with ed code and with district policy. You just put the spin to your site because, you know, each side is different. So the, the climate work needs to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. That, that's our public comment. Back to you, trustee Christian.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to trustee Smith Foles for comments.
So I would love to know the best practices at sites. What are they finding the best interventions are that are working? So I would love for that to be floated out there. I would love to know about re-entry training. How do we train teachers to have students re-enter their classrooms at all levels? Like what does that look like? Even if they're out and they're sitting in another teacher's classroom? And again, this is all, I'm talking from the, the idea of when we were back in brick and mortar. You know, you would send your student to another teacher's classroom. I don't know if we're even able to do that because of COVID now. So that would be another thing. How do we handle that re-entry back into the classroom? And then, again, I like the idea of, for me, I still hear homeroom as a plus, not a negative. Homeroom as a plus and a place for us to really have these conversations, whether it's around mindfulness or meditation space or whatever it is that we need to help kids start off to be academically ready. I would like to look at some site handbooks, trustee Christian. I would like to look at site handbooks and what they have in their handbooks about what they're doing, especially at the secondary level. But I would like that to float down. I would like to start at secondary and then kind of work our way down. Looking at site handbooks, not just their site plans, but their site handbooks. We can't start this work soon enough about Harbor Way and about just our, the way our students are treated in general. And then the support that we need to have for our teachers and everyone on site that touches our children. Like we need to start the work yesterday. So whatever you need to start that work, please let us know. Whatever resources you need to start that work, what training, what people you need to be in place, please let us know. Because to me, this is, again, yesterday's work that needed to be started. And again, it was already started, but needs to get fast-tracked, fast-tracked. Because if we're talking about students coming back, we are talking about students that may have to have this pathway to getting what they need. So we need to have some answers to how we're going to, where we're going to put them and, and what we're going to do. So again, I just want anybody who's in the way, move out of the way so the people who are here can do the work. And that's trustee Christian. I think that's it. This was, this was great. It was a lot, but yeah. So thank you for the presentation about Harbor Way. I really appreciate it. That's trustee Christian.
Thank you, trustee Smith Foles. And I just want to, you know, echo along with you is that we need to make sure that we have provision, prevention mechanism in place to, you know, to help our kids, you know, if we have mentors. Things to help them on the smaller scale to prevent them from going to Harbor Way. So we need to have the wraparound services to help our students. And, and just be from experience, you know, just from the high school, working in the high school is to make sure that we have the, the prevention measures there or intervention. So I just basically want to echo those areas. And that's all I have to say for, for that item. And now we'll move to item D. And we'll have update, Dr. Wool would give an update on item D.
So and real quickly, we're gonna,
I'm sorry, I have a point of order. At the time, we're 5:56. So you may have to do an extension or we may have to table this item, whatever you want to do. But it's 5:56 and I don't think we have enough time to go through D, three, four, and two, or sorry, D, three and four, if we don't extend time.
Okay, so we need to stand time. And so you make a motion to stand time?
What, so just, let me, if I could ask one question. Dr. Wool, did we already do D or we have something else to add to D?
So, LaShante was just going to give an update of her work.
And student services, yeah. So it should take like four minutes, three minutes.
Okay. So trustee Christian, you want to extend to 6:15?
Yes, we'll extend to 6:15.
All right, I'm moved that we extend this meeting to 6:15?
Yes.
All right, we're all good.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
So LaShante is going to talk about where we're at in school climate. And this ties right into everything that we've been talking about. What are the next steps to bring forward? And the reason we wanted to bring her here tonight is we created the position, but we want to make sure that we're ensuring that the supports are there also so that we can really get the outcomes that we want from that. So I'm going to let her kind of outline the pieces. And then as we get into the next steps, I'll tell you what I've written down that we're bringing back to you.
All right, so I'll share my screen again. All right. So as Dr. Wool just stated, this is like an update. It's two parts. So it's what positive school climate work is. And as I stated in the very beginning, that you can't take positive school climate work away from student services work because they work hand in hand. And so how do we recalibrate and really align our discipline and student supports? And we wanted to start, Phil and I kind of put this list together of like, what is the work when we talk about positive school climate? So again, it's suspensions, it's expulsions, it's this multi-tiered systems of support, it's the social emotional wellness. And then Phil added in, it's also safety transfers. We know that it's placement for students who are coming back from our justice system. It's re-entry, it's placements in outside programs, it's safety, it's working with CSOs, it's establishing guidelines. It's referencing ed code and suspension policies and updating those. It's really overseeing our community day schools, which in this case would be Harbor Way. Classroom support, climate team coaching, making sure that if we're using restorative justice practices, that we have a restorative justice person who can go out and help school sites and train school sites. And how do we train an SEL? And what do our he, healing center practices look like on sites? Then another part of school climate and student services is having that centralized like counseling support. So for students, instead of waiting for a student to be suspended for a period of time, right? How do you intervene and catch students before they're actually meeting that threshold? And then to this point, I want to emphasize that some schools have more supports than others. So when you have schools that don't have the necessary supports to support a student on campus, what does it look like to support them centrally? Data collection. And then supports for all of our high need students. So if we're in October and we see a student already has 12 to 14 days of suspension, how are we working with that site and working with that family to ensure that we have How are we working with that site and working with that family to ensure that we have our hands around them as well? So that, I mean, you know, the saying, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it truly takes a village, right? And so how do we ensure that not only does the site support them, but we're offering some supplemental support to them? And then how do we directly support our school crisis team? Because that's also a part of climate, right, which is also a part of student services.
I just want to add a couple of things.
Oops.
Before LaShante and I got to student services, there wasn't really anything formalized. So I had to put a lot of procedures together while she worked on the climate part of it. And we we've we've, you know, we're part of the coordinating council, so we meet with all the student services directors in the in the in the county. You know, we're a member of the association. I've I've gone through student services uh uh academy. So we 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 developed a lot of uh resources to help our students. Like, our main thing is, we we just didn't want any more of our students to slip through the cracks. So that's what we build on.
So what is like needed to really make this kind of department all that it can be? So. Uh there was the position created that I stepped into, and then there's already the work that Mr. Johnson has been doing. But we really need to start looking at um our resources and what human resources we have. And how do we prioritize that resource, those resources to focus on this work? So as you saw, that was an extensive list, and we know that when our students come back from COVID, right, being out a year. There was already trauma that happened before, and there was already students who were sus- like who were exposed to more trauma, right? And then they're coming back. And we don't know what happened during that time of uh being away from school. So how do we strengthen our resources to support those students and those families? And how do we recommit our work to our? Students who are already vulnerable to begin with, right? And if you don't have the human resources to do that, it gets really uh difficult. We also need an updated data system aligned to a multi-tiered systems of support. It's really, really difficult to talk about what's happening in our elementaries if we don't even have a central system to figure out. When our students referred, how often are they referred? In elementary, they may not be going home, but they may be sitting in the office all day, right? And we don't have a centralized system to look at that at a district level. We need resources for direct student support. So I talked about um centralized counseling resources. We're doing a pilot right now with Seneca. Um but post-COVID, right, when we're back in our schools, how do we provide that centralized counseling support for students who may need it? And then intense case management. We have students who return from our juvenile justice system and we meet with them and we put them back in school, but there's no follow-up, right? So how are we ensuring that that student who was just as impacted is now in school and able to make successful gains? We have to make sure that we have the case management piece embedded. Um there's an idea that Phil and I have of like filtering all student services through Greenwood Academy since it's there. Um I'm currently there supporting as well. And so how do we strengthen what's happening um in that like alternative world to connect it back to climate? And then how do we align all of our partners? I think we, in our district, we have a practice of allowing partners to come in. And we, they tell us this is what we're gonna do and we say, thank you so much, instead of saying this is what we need. And this is what we need to be target, this is what we need you to target. And so we really need to align how we look at the resources that come to our district. And we need targeted support and training for restorative practices. Uh Ms. Smith Folds, um you talked about the reentry processes. And I think it was really big that she mentioned, it's not only reentry for school, but how do you reenter that classroom? And who could be assigned to help with those processes? We had a lot of schools calling in um last when we were kind of in session around like, hey, can I just have someone? Come walk through a circle with the family or walk through a circle with the teacher or train our site? And we don't really have designated personnel to be able to do that. And so it'd be great if we had a system that we had, you know, further support for that. And then targeted support to aid sites and prevention and intervention. We talked a lot about intervention needing to be paired with consequences. But if you're at a site with limited resources, what does it look like to really train in preventative practices and um intervening practices? And so. That's what we kind of need.
Just to let everybody know, so like two years ago, when we established student services, there were about five hundred students that came through our office. Last year before COVID, before March thirteenth, we had about four hundred, so it's it's increasing. So we really need to do some uh prevention and intervention.
Dr. Wool, were you gonna say something?
Um so the reason, again, we wanted to bring this out front is that. We believe now is the time as we're building the budget for next year, as we're building the entry plan coming out of COVID. As we've really made a shift in elevating the role. That Phil is serving at Greenwood, the role that Edith is serving at Vista, where we've. Linked the virtual academy and the Vista model. There's that synergy now with the student services and the Greenwood synergy. We think we can create some synergistic. Focus points, and we wanted to make sure we'd started here with the safety committee and then we get some direction. On next steps as we move forward towards bringing some proposals to you. And to the board.
Okay.
So trustee Christian, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
So. They told you what they need. I just saw it on a slide.
Mm-hmm.
Like they just told you everything they need. So I think one of the good things is. You ha- you know, so because you know what they need, let's just start checking it off the list. Put the resources in the, and when I say resources, I mean money. Put the money behind what they need to give, to give, to set them in a position to serve the children the best. So that slide that Ms. Smith just showed. Take each part of that slide and put a dollar with it. And I'm sure that they have an idea of how much it's gonna cost to make sure that those things are done, and that's what should be brought to the, in my opinion. The direction it should be brought to the board, like there. If you know, if you ask the question and the answer is given to you, then all we need is the the. Final look at this is what it is. These people, like the people who are the experts in the room and the people who have the expertise behind it have said. I need A through Z. Great, you just told me. You did your research, you know, you're boots on the ground, you have an idea, you you are the expert in the room, you need A through Z. Great. I would think that the district's now thing is, how do I get them A through Z? And once I get them A through Z. Look, board, I just gave them A through Z and and the board can say, great, go with God. You know what I mean? Like, go off and do what you just said that you could do. Like, for me, that's. A very clear line that's happening to where we can make sure the kids are getting served to the best of their ability. Mr. Johnson and Ms. Smith know. What they need to get a harbor way to be successful and wherever Harbor Way is, what they ne- need for that to be a success. Ms. Smith and Mr. Booker and Mr. Johnson, they all know what we need for it to be. And Ms. Jody to be safe. And then so they're giving us a list. And then we just fill the list, we being you. Y'all fill the list. And then y'all come back and say, look, the list is filled, and we can say, go with God. So I think that that's the direction. I just want to make sure everybody understands my direction. You ask your experts for the list of what they need, the experts give you the list, you tell me how you can fill the list or to what capacity you can fill the list. And then we can make the decision to say that is adequate or. Dr. Wool, that's inadequate. Go back and bit more things for them to fill their list because they need more than this, and then we can go forth. Thank you, trustee Christian. That's it.
Uh thank you, uh trustee Smith Foles. And as we come to the close of the meeting, um I just want to say that. Everything that we're doing is to improve, to make our uh our district a strong district, making sure that our young people have the wraparound services, making sure. That um all the things are in place, and that's what we're here to do, is to serve and to. Uh make sure that everything is is gonna be done. And so um. And um and so whatever resources needed, that's what we will, that's what we would do. And so um as we come to the close of the meeting, um.
I'm sorry, order, did we call for public comment through that one? We didn't ask for public comment.
We did, we did.
Sorry.
Kind of jumped the commentary.
Yeah, sorry about that. That was on me. I skipped questions, trustee Christian. I went out of order.
Okay, so uh are there any public uh comment on this particular item?
There is not. So we're we're back on track again.
All right. All right, so as we come to uh me to a close of the meeting, um that are there any action items?
There are no action items. Um our next meeting, you see, is scheduled there. What I've heard for the safety committee is you would definitely like to see some of these things coming back with that COVID lens on them. Um what I just heard from trustee Smith Folds is that. Based on what you've heard for Harbor Way and some of the expert things, if we put together a proposal, bring it forward to the full board. Once it's been vetted by this expert group so that we can begin moving on some of those pieces. Um I've heard that you would like to have reentry training conversations. Here at the safety committee and maybe a best practices, i.e. what has Grant done? To change their suspension rates brought back to present here as some of the next steps. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. You covered everything, you summed up everything what what needs to happen.
Don't forget the part that I said that I want the experts in the room. When y'all start making these decisions about COVID lenses, make sure that you have the experts in the room with the boots on the ground knowledge about, yes, this will work, this is implementable. Or no, this is dreamable. Like, we need reality. What will work when you start having these conversations? And I'm also looking for. Paper, it written down, like not in the check in the mail phase, but we're in the I need to see it phase. So that's the other thing that I've put out there that I really want to make sure that you're clear about. Like, I want. The next time that you're coming back, you're coming back with implementable, implementable things. For reentry, whatever that looks like. And there's a lot of work to do. From what I just heard today, there's a lot of work to do, so give the people the space and the grace to do the work. So then they're able to do what they need to do to bring it back to you, so you can bring it back to us, and we can bring it back to the board.
So just to. On the Harbor Way, do you want that to come back as a proposal through the? This committee or go as a presentation to the board?
Um. I think. Do we need to iron out anything before it goes to the full board? Or?
Just to state, so we already have kind of like this proposal that we presented to you tonight. And in order for the state to recognize it, for CDE to recognize it, it has to be voted on and approved by our school board. Our full board. Um and then after that, it comes back to us to kind of do the implementing and the the program specifics. So the location basically has to be approved.
Okay, we're looking at putting it at Greenwood.
So that's what you want to bring to the board is can we move Harbor Way to Greenwood and then can we go and flesh out exactly what that looks like with all the meat behind it? We just need to have a yes that we can move it. And then then we can, then you guys can start really formulating what that move would look like, what that new position it, positionality. Of Harbor Way to Greenwood would look like. And Mr. Johnson, you're over Greenwood and you're in agreement that I want this school. Give me the school, I want it. I will, and LaShan and Ms. Smith, you're in agreement that this is the best place for. Harbor Way to go and where you, because you and Mr. Mr. Johnson are already working so tightly. You can have quick implementation if you're provided all the resources that you need.
Correct.
And yeah, and so what we would do is agenda is. Potentially as early as the tenth Harbor Way with a. Bit of the presentation you saw today for the full board, and then we would come back through the safety committee for all of that, as you said, the paper and the implementation pieces. That would then go to the board again. So it'd be kind of a one-two approach. So that everyone understands, okay, Harbor Way is here, this is it. This is also an opportunity on the tenth. For the full board to weigh in on a couple of those very specific on paper pieces that align to what you saw today. From LaShanti and Phil, they would be the presenters.
I don't have a problem with that as long as it's understood that Harbor Way is going with resources. They just not go into the, they're going with resources, like they cannot be the program that they need to be without resources. Not resources that are gonna drain from Mr. Johnson's program, but their own resources that get to go with them. To make sure that they're able to be implemented correctly. Like, it's just the same thing that we give every other campus that has shared. Space. They get to come with their equip, their stuff equipped in. Does that make sense? Like, they they get to come with everything that they need to be successful.
And and that's why the discussion has to happen sooner rather than later as we're having priority conversations. You want to make sure that the the key priorities are first. In that funding models.
Yeah, lo- you the money man, long as you know that they get to come, like they, that's the bill that's gotta be paid. That's the bill that, you know, we're not gonna rob from Peter to pay Paul. Harbor Way, if they're going to Greenwood, they need to make sure they're going. Ms. Smith and Mr. Johnson need to make sure that they have the room to be able to implement it. As lush as possible with the budget, like you understand what I'm saying, has to be a clear conversation. This is what you have, can you do what you need to do with this? So long as that's clear with everybody, I'm okay with it.
Well, I mean, there's three things. So you got Harbor Way, and then we still have student services that we run out of Harbor Way, and then we have. Um uh Greenwood. So there's three separate things that we could put together for you.
Make sure they get everything they need. That's my, that my thing is make sure, I would like, I want them to make sure they have everything they need. And and their, Mr. Johnson and Ms. Smith are clearly telling you what they need. Also, when you have this conversation, make sure you're including Mr. Booker and safety and because all of that plays into it, make sure you're including your CSOs, because that play into it. Because you're doing a transition. So again, these, the people, the experts have to be at the table. So trustee Christian, that's all I had to say on that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, trustees, submit foes. And once again, I just want to thank everyone. Uh for participating on the safety uh uh climate committee, committee, meeting uh this evening. And um and we would bring this before the board. And we'll go from there. And so we have a lot to do. And we just want to make sure everything is gonna run uh accordingly uh as we push forward. Um, nothing being said, um. The meeting is adjourned.
Yep.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.